To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got anybody here for public input? Any amendments to the agenda? I guess you're gonna make this easy for me. Okay, uh, through the mayor's report, uh, we do have one announcement. I think everybody should have a sheet of paper here from, uh, the September colleagues, President Will Jones has extended invitation to the mayor and all city council members and spouses to be guests to the Easter Sunday performance of Messiah. After the Messiah performance, he turned invited to dinner at the Swedish Crown Restaurant. Uh, and then it gives who to, uh, notify, so if you're interested in that, uh, please make a mention of that.
I would like to add that, um, we did...
They should.
All right.
Uh, then you also have April meetings.
May we also say, extend our thanks for that.
Like that, not do this. I just would encourage everyone to, if they can, and, uh, we will have other dignitaries, uh, in attendance. Right. Thank you. You have listed your, uh, April meetings in front of you. Um, Greg has mentioned we need to set a meeting date for, uh, CIP, and you have any dates that you, I don't remember.
Look it up. Uh, Thursday, April 13th, or Tuesday, April 18th? Yes.
I'll be gone if that matters.
Yeah, what time is it? Uh, noon, 5:30, 6:00. We need to begin at 6:00.
April 13th, what was the other date?
The 18th.
The 13th is Thomas Jefferson's birthday, so...
18th is backstage?
Either it's mine or Apple.
13th. Is everybody good with either date? 5:01, 13th works, 5:08. And we... Everybody else? Last one. Right. Yep, 13th, you're good on that.
5:30?
5:08, 13th works.
I think so.
So let's just say Thursday, April 13th, 5:30. Right here?
Yes.
Okay, then, uh, moving on to the next item. Does somebody else have anything for April meetings that we need to, uh, discuss?
It is Monday, 30th.
That tone I can't get right away.
That's 13th.
Are we also having a meeting on the phone?
No.
Okay.
So we're still good?
5:30, is that right?
5:30, uh, Thursday, April 13th. Okay, moving on to the next item, proclamation. Greg, if you would be so kind?
Sure. Um, proclamation's in honor of Bjorn Olaf Hallberg, former mayor of Monk Forest, Linsborg Sister City. Um, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas on behalf of the city of Linsborg, I wish to record our deep sorrow over the passing of Mr. Bjorn Olaf Hallberg on Thursday, March 23rd, 2017. And whereas Mr. Bjorn Olaf Hallberg was a beloved friend to Linsborg and a former mayor to our sister city, Monk Forest, Sweden. And whereas he was an accomplished and well-respected individual in the political aspect as well as personal, he served as a mayor of Monk Forest from 2009 to 2014. In the past, he has been described as a soft-spoken individual. Whereas residents of Linsborg who knew Mr. Bjorn Olaf Hallberg affectionately called him 'Bio' and delighted at the fact that he was very instrumental in maintaining a strong Monk Forest...
Sorry.
Sweden-Linsborg Sister City relationship. He was an advocate of international relations, helping new immigrants and refugees to Sweden. Whereas Mr. Bjorn Olaf Hallberg was a strong supporter of our community, our traditions, and had made appearances at the Spence Killings Fest celebrations on many occasions. He was a lover of the arts and Swedish football. Whereas he was a man of many talents and upholds the highest praise of the people of Linsborg, a man to be recognized and honored for he was kind, generous, and had an endearing soul. The community of Linsborg is blessed to have known him and been a part of his life. And now therefore I, Bill Taylor, Mayor of the city of Linsborg, on behalf of the entire city council, in recognition of Bjorn Olaf Hallberg's many contributions to our city and its citizens, do hereby express our deep appreciation for his dedication to the progress of the Monk Forest-Sweden-Linsborg Sister City relationship and extend to his family our sincere sympathy upon his passing. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Linsborg to be affixed this Thursday of April, 2017."
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All favor I.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving on, we have consent agenda. Uh, Jerry, roll call please.
I'll have a motion.
Oh, a motion. Well, let's do it. Let's have a motion.
Move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call?
Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Email? Yes. David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what happens when you put a rookie in charge. Can I say, do you think I've done enough that would catch on? Okay, next item, we have, uh, appointments. Uh, Mayor Taylor is recommending, uh, Mary Lynn Shield to the Linsborg Housing Authority Board of Directors. Ms. Lynn Shield is a former smokehouse high school teacher and the director of the Linsborg Senior Center. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very good, thank you. And planning and zoning, we have, uh, Jerry, you want to talk about this a little bit, please?
Planning and zoning, uh, has recommended, they requested rezone of the parcel of 131 South Third from residential 1 to residential 2. Uh, they recommended that, uh, unanimously after a public hearing. And our recommendation to you is to pass ordinance 5040 to make it official. Are there any questions on the rezone? There should be a packet attached to council documents that explains the rezone, perusing as the application, a map, and other information. But are there any questions?
Is, is this considered a tiny one?
No.
Does that mean also?
I don't believe so. This meets our minimum single-family dwelling, uh, minimum size of 600, uh, 600 feet, so it's tiny ones are less than that.
Uh, a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Question carries.
Thank you.
Excuse me, and if you roll call the two ordinance, oh?
Correct.
Eddie?
Jerry, thank you.
Yes, Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see you're gonna miss that one. Move on to... Sorry.
Perfectly fine. All right, blocks her off.
All right, guys, we have no old business to discuss and new business. Uh, first one is official city newspaper. Uh, do I have a motion?
I move that we, uh, accept the Linsborg New Record as the official city newspapers for the coming year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we don't have to roll call this one, do we?
No.
Good. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? See none? Uh, city depositories. Do I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
And this would be recommend, uh, People's Bank of Trust, Farmers State Bank, First Bank Kansas, Bank of Tested, and Kansas Municipal Investment Pool as the official depositories for the city of Linsborg, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No discussion? I didn't ask for that. Uh, the next item up is the, uh, Sessquintennial... Yes, is that right?
The Sessquintennial.
Lady out west, oh, there we go. Is there a motion? If you had a chance to look at the logo, make a decision on this, uh, do we need to decide which one of these logos, which one we want to try and go with?
We also have to decide whether we want to do that in the House, correct?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
May I address the council as a member of the Sessquintennial Committee?
See, she says her name. She's on committee.
This just actually came to us via the mayor. If you look at the Sestrum building, you'll notice that there's a big, for lack of a better word, blob, um, at the lower right-hand corner of, of the logo, or of the J.O. Sestrum logo. Guess that happened when some clean-up or some repair attempted to be done, uh, with a match paint, and, uh, some of those deals tried making it a little better, and then you think, oh, maybe I make it a little bigger, and then you make it a little bigger, and so there is a, um, a blob there that's about 6'8" by 6'8". And after we developed the logo, we were trying to talk, we were talking about, um, uh, using the brand, getting people familiar with it, to start introducing them to the concept that in, um, 2019, we'll be celebrating our 150th anniversary. Um, the idea was tossed out, but perhaps that logo would just about cover that area. So Holly, um, did the concepts that you see in front of you. This is something that the committee feels is a good way to get the brand out there. Um, the city isn't scheduled to paint the Sestrum for several years into the foreseeable future. It's something that wouldn't be offensive before 2019 and wouldn't be offensive after 2019. People will know that Linsborg's 150 years old. Um, in addition to contacting Bill, uh, the gentleman that painted, um, the original J.O. Sestrum logo, uh, we have a quote from him. We also reached out to, um, uh, two local artists who painted the Wizard of Oz playbill on the side of the Malcolm Espey building. I don't know at this time, and that's something they're interested in doing. Um, but, uh, if you remember seeing that next to the studio, they did an awesome job. So, um, that is some of the background information on the request.
There's a new, uh, I don't know if there is, but a vinyl application that you can apply to substrates such as this, uh, maybe another option. It will only last a year or two.
I don't understand that one.
Uh, it'd be a printed vinyl, applied film, that you can actually stick to.
Even on a rough surface?
Go on brick block. It'll listen to this, I'm sorry. Correct.
So, does that mean you then can remove it, or that it just wears off?
You can remove it.
Ah.
Maybe you're a little kind of, uh, because compared to somebody painting it. So I guess the first question is, uh, do we want to do it? Uh, the second question, I guess, we've got a couple of different options here. Uh, I personally would like to top them with the order going around the J.O. Sestrum Conference Center. To me, that just really makes them kind of stand out, where this one doesn't have, have that. Uh, and then...
I was trying to figure out what was different.
Thank you. So I guess, uh, my question is, how do we want to, how do you guys want to approach this? Uh, do we need to, we wrote to see, you know, why do we want to add the logo and have to go from there?
Well, when you already have a motion to add the logo, but you haven't necessarily specified which design in that motion.
How to paint for it?
Sessquintennial Committee.
Okay, what's there now?
The Sestrum logo without a, a black box for it, just that. I hope if we decide to do this, they'll look at that thing Cory was just talking about. The only thing is, they're interested in asking for... New additions.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to put the logo on. And I guess we can leave it up to the committee as to how that would be applied and work for the, the city. Would you give that?
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
I'd like to have this talked about whether we want a box or not, because I think they would consider what we did.
We take that as a second motion?
Sure.
Well, I think you could just refer to the committee instead of bringing it back for final approval, see whether they recommend it.
Sounds good. So do we need to amend the motion?
No, I don't think you need to. I think that's just the understanding that you're gonna... You're approving the concept at this point. You're not approving any specific design or any expenditure funds. You need to see how much each costs.
I think I also kind of like the idea Cory had, just we had a vinyl that's not permanent, just in case for some reason, bright colors due to sun fading faster, it starts looking bad or something. I don't know.
May I ask a question of the city attorney?
Sure.
With all due respect, what difference does the cost make if the committee is paying, if the Sessquintennial?
The city is not paying for it?
No.
Yeah, but...
Okay.
It's just your building. You need to approve what goes on there.
Exactly. And that's why we have the mock-up spend, so you can see what the logo looks like.
So again, we're just approving the concept right now, and we can refer later to see specifics of the design and...
Well, I do agree. I like the box. And one thing that was brought up during staff meeting today is, this would also need to be approved by the Design Review Committee.
Okay, so this has to go through those other processes, and then we're just gonna go ahead and vote on the concept. We have a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Can I write a show that I've stayed, please?
Along the same line, and it is concomitant to what we're talking about, and there's no action here, but I think something like the J.O. Sestrum Conference Center needs to be put on the front of the building as well. There, it's pretty bland up there, and except for the top of the building, it says nothing really there that identifies it. Just took off.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, D, the personnel policy. Greg, do you want to give us a, a run at all this, or?
Actually, there's, uh, two proposed changes to the existing personnel policy, and the changes are included in your packet. The first one deals with the callback policy, increasing the amount of callback pay from $60 to $90 for up to two hours of work. Um, this was originally established at $60 in 2007. Um, there's also the addition of section 7-9, uh, that deals with discrimination and retaliation as prohibited, um, and requiring the allowance of time off for, uh, certain purposes, confidentiality of information, and it's related to, um, providing protection for, uh, employees that are victims of domestic violence and/or victims of sexual assault. This would also bring our personnel policy into compliance with, uh, KSA 44-1132.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the changes to the city of Linsborg personnel policy as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I, I do have a question on the callback policy. Is this for, um, does this include all city employees or any city employee that would be called back after completion of a 40-hour work week, or after?
It would, it would apply to any non-salary city employee. And that compensation, is that in addition to their hourly base, then? It's in lieu of. In lieu of, yes. So in other words, if they get called out for five minutes, they get paid $90. If they get called out for two hours, they would get paid $90, and then the regular overtime compensation would kick in after that, for two hours? Yes. We also looked at, uh, on-call pay, um, and it's, ends up being more cost prohibitive than, um, amending the existing call-out pay.
How often do we use this, this, any regular practice?
33 times last year. Um, it's up to, I average it once a week, but mainly utility issues.
That was gonna be my next question. Um, does, and this would also include, I presume, police?
It would apply to all non-salary employees. Yeah, because the policy is not written that differentiates between departments.
And if it's, if it's non, okay...
Now, this is non-schedule call-out.
Non-schedule, so if it's only, okay, it's outside regular hours, not necessarily even overtime?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. So the policy states that, um, if they're called back, they must report to work within one hour of the time they receive a call for service. Is that standard for everybody? So that, the way that's written, is that in order to get the, the $90, or $60, assuming $90, possibly, um, or is that just the policy of our city that...
That's the policy of our city. And in other words, instead of saying, you're on call, the minute I say you're on call, I restrict what you can do. I have to compensate you for limiting what you can do. So in other words, if you and I are working in the same department, they call me first, I'm unavailable. They call you, and you respond. You have to, and you can respond, and you respond within an hour, within...
If you can, that just worried me, I guess. Any employee that is called back for duty after normal business hours must report to work within one hour of the time they receive a call for service. So it just sounds like everyone's on call, that's what concerned me. So they don't, even though it says they must report to work within an hour.
Doesn't really mean if, if they agree to this, they can, they need to do this, and so? Yes. Because if they're Yugoslav, you're like, you can't do it very well. Isn't that what you were talking about, though?
Yeah, it was kind of concerning the way it read it, so. Because it sounds like everyone must report within an hour if they're asked, the way it reads. What are you sure? We're very aggressive with the $60 and $90, sorry. Well, yeah, that's part of the, the policy. Probably needs a different word there. Like should. Except for another day?
It's up to you, in front of you now, however you want to handle it.
I guess, uh, defer to our council, both. Were you okay with that? It's been there before. You can amend it if they should, or some other word. Or the manager's staff, I guess, is appropriate. The way it's written.
The way we've used this policy since it's been in place, at least over 10 years, we had to every bad instance where people got called and not showed up, and the next person in line gets called, shows up, and that person's compensated. There's no, um, disciplinary action taken against the individual that did not report.
You're okay with that? Well, is this working?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
Great, you're okay.
I mean, from the application, from the application, from our standards, we're working with, defer to the city attorney for the legality of it. I would prefer to see it say it's expected to report.
If it doesn't become a mandatory requirement, then it wouldn't be, I mean, theoretically, this is grounds for discipline if, if someone doesn't. I think if you soften the language a little bit, it's, it's better.
Oh, just take out must and put in is expected to.
Is expected to, that's what I would suggest, but that's just off the top of my head.
Do we need to amend the motion to, to do that?
Well, if you got the motion now for the change to $90, you could do it by separate motion if you wish. I think that'd be cleaner.
Okay. Let's do that, then.
Well, motion is true.
Approved.
Both of the entire policy?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's the case, then no, it should be done as an amendment, the existing motion.
And make the original motion.
David did?
I did.
Yeah, and Lane did the second.
David, do you want to, uh...
Well, I would say we could, um, uh, amend the emotion if the, the motion or not, you said, um, "Two is expected to" in section A, and, uh, if the second is reasonable. Yes. Is that right, Bill?
Yes. Okay, so everybody understands we have the first two items, uh, as presented in the, the motion, and we have the amended part of the motion. Everybody understands where we are? Okay, let's do roll call, please.
Okay, we're, just so I'm clear, we're roll calling the amendment, right?
No, we...
So they have amended the motion?
The, the original motion.
Right.
Okay, so now we're only doing one motion, then?
Correct.
Okay. All righty then, Mark?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, we don't have an executive session. Was that correct? That's correct. And we can move on to, uh, department head reports. CBD, Sestrum.
I think I just mainly wanted to report to you just a couple of brief things tonight. Uh, we spent a lot of time this last month, or maybe a lot of time, we did a lot of time updating technology, uh, things that we needed to do, uh, to be better online. One of the things that we did, we updated the Sestrum's website, and, and I took probably a couple of days to work on it. I have smart stuff, been ready to go, and, and running, and it's great because it is, great on a smartphone. You can utilize the website directly from there. You can call directly from the website, and it's really, really smartphone compatible, and we wanted that, so, good update. and it's really, really smart phone compatible and we wanted that, so good update. The other thing that we did, and we updated the travel app, it has a whole different look now. If you were to go to it, it has buttons instead of the ones up and down. I just realized today that it was updated for Apple. It takes you about two days maybe for Google to take care of it, about two weeks for Apple. I don't know why, but there's a big lag in time. So anyhow, one of the things that we did with this, Rick Bodenhammer, who is now on the CBD board, he voted him in this past, past board, past council meeting, put together our list of outdoor activities in the area because we're realizing that more and more of the time we're seeing people stay over late when they're coming for these activities. We have a list of thirty activities now that are within this app with links to how to register to for these activities or links to the websites to get more information. So we felt like that was a huge improvement. We continue to be busy at the conference center, we're continuing to get more phone calls for events, bringing from meetings to weddings, just a variety of different things. This past weekend, prom went very well and was very, very well received by the students and staff that were working in it. We also Sunday hosted an event with individuals coming from all over Kansas to meet to talk about different issues. So just a variety of things going on. Any questions you have for me? Okay.
Thank you. Let's go to public safety.
Like I said, I wanted to update some of the things while the safety center, we have a pair of compressor that comes down, we had replaced some more generator, fire department small trivalve equipment. So there's been a lot of activity at the safety center. Getting prepared as EMS is looking to move out of the building into the new one. We have a basement for that. We're at about a hundred and thirty runs for the ambulance service, which is a little down in the first quarter. We're about forty-five runs for the fire department, which is actually high. Police department, we've scrapped our hundredth case for the year so far, so we're staying busy. We did receive the body cameras, which I'm wearing one tonight, so I thought I'd show it to you. So you're all on candid camera.
Does it feel heavy?
No, it's really, no. I got-
I know, I was just saying. It's better to go like this.
But it basically has a locking mechanism that's magnet, this goes inside, it's magnet to your, so then it has a button in front, it turns on, put their screen on, it tells you when you're recording and, and smile.
It's that irony mission, guys, you know he's doing it.
But still, it's a manual turn-on.
Yep.
I just noticed the stuff with, in Missouri where it said that they go on when the sirens go off.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, they, they will activate when we turn the lights on in our patrol car, because they'll be tied in with the camera system.
Yeah.
On our cars. But we can activate them separately from the car, with the button. So looking forward to getting these put in. Right now, we're set up to, the software for the gear system this week and it's part of putting in the patrol cars to make this compatible, but currently we have to wear a mic, a body mic, when we have the car camera. And so that will be eliminated now because this has the mic built in for both. So it's a piece that we were already wearing and now it's a camera, so pretty excited about it. And I want to thank city council for pushing forward with this. Looking forward to getting everybody on camera.
Can we get prints of what you just took?
If you'd like.
I'm watching the video.
And that's all that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, public works. I see already you don't have any cool toys to show.
It's kind of boring. I don't have a lot this first half of official day. I did want to thank each and every one of you for your trust in appointing me as the public works director. I still haven't totally grasped that whole title yet and it's pretty interesting to me thinking where I've come from after nineteen years of working with the city. But I believe we've got a really good group of guys, kind of mixed between young and old, some experience and some learning. And I think over a couple more years, we'll, we'll be in a real good place with where we're at. And I'm looking forward to trying to lead them to a good place. So a few updates, the state street is coming along, we're fighting weather right now. They're all been cut and ready to seal on the cracks or the cuts, the paving, they're just fighting the rain. And once the rain lets up, they can go back and seal the cracks. And we have to work on, our point has to work on some of the drainage on the south side, but they're, they're, and once it drains or dries out, they'll be moving forward with that. So hopefully, we get past tomorrow, we can have some dry weather and they can get that sealed up for the end of the week maybe and then maybe the first and next week, I don't know for sure, maybe get toward it and get it opened up. So at least we can get traffic going. It's, it's turned out really well and I think there's going to be a lot nicer of transition to go through there, so. The other paving project on Olson should be starting the second weekend, May, I believe. And I have heard on chip seal, when that's supposed to start yet, but Olson Street will be real good to get that done too, that's always starting to get bad, or like park. So look forward to getting that done. New composter arrived in the later part of the week last week and the street department has been busy putting that together, getting that ready. They picked the old one up today, so hopefully in the next week or so, we'll see the new composter out, turn a compost out of the yard, as long as it's not too many. Other than that, just trying to grab a whole thing right now and get our direction going and we're happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, first time. All right, under another, we have a couple items. Greg did hand me a learner tent from Kathy Peterson. I was reading to you, is my intent to retire from employment with the city of Winsborg on July seventh, two thousand seventeen. How many years?
Not sure off the top of my head, only one.
Forty-one, I'd say.
And then the, the second item is cancel the elections. And Greg just wanted to give us a little update on what's going to transpire with the new procedure for cancel elections.
In two thousand fifteen, Kansas legislature voted to change local government elections from the spring to the fall. It was the option of making them partisan or non-partisan. And so in November of two thousand fifteen, you as a council adopted charter ordinance twenty, which follows state statute, changing, making the elections the first Tuesday in November of odd number of years. And additionally, once the election occurs, those that receive the most number of votes in their ward would actually be, take office the second Monday in January. And then, per the statute also, all the appointed officials, which would be city administrators, city clerks, city treasurer, fire chief, chief of police, the judge of municipal court, the director of public safety, city attorney, public works director, and parks recreation director would be appointed the first regular meeting in February. Registration deadline for the fall election is June first at noon. And you would, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand correctly, you have to register at the clerk, the Person County Clerk's office, you cannot register at the city hall anymore, or city office.
The office is not capable. Yeah, I can just say thank you to our state government for thinking that we couldn't handle something so simple and for making it even easier to run for local office. There are just people coming out in thrones to do that. Way to go.
Does registration by Jim first have to do also with, with an individual who just wants to vote?
No.
Uh, let's see, two. Last day to register is three weeks prior to the election.
Go ahead and do that, they, this will attack.
Um, the mayor, Councilman Gallant, Councilman Friesen, Councilman Abel, and Councilwoman Menty. Those will be up for election. Assuming there is a vast number of candidates applying, there would be an August primary.
I'm sure there will be a primary.
I'm not sure. I don't know. I could throw something at you, but I'm not sure actually it'd be.
After June first.
June, oh, June first is the deadline to file, June, June first. So you filed only June second and you want to re-run it?
Yeah.
You're, you're out. So prior to-
Did we? Was that a little more positive, like brushing there before we got June first?
What can you, what's really she?
It's up to you, White.
I don't think there's any-
I think you can file now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, commentary? All right, seen that. Last item we have, number fourteen, adjournment.
Remove where you adjourned?
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're on your own. Thank you.
Officially done.